Good afternoon fellow Toastmasters and dear guests. I am Toastmaster Abhinavya and I will be the Sergeant at Arms for today's meeting. I am delighted to welcome you all to the 250th meeting, 255th meeting of the Dynamic Leaders Forum Toastmasters Club, Asia III Division H District 120. Before starting the meeting, I would like to mention three ground rules which we will follow in our Toastmasters meeting. Toastmasters International is a nonprofit educational organization that teaches public speaking and leadership skills through a worldwide network of clubs. The mission of a Toastmasters club is to provide every member the opportunity to develop communication and leadership skills which in turn fosters self-confidence and personal growth. Now coming to the ground rules for today's meeting. Please remain on mute until asked to speak. Avoid speaking about sex, politics and religion. It would be great if you appreciate the speaker by showing thumbs up or collapse by clicking on the reaction button. Let me now hand over the session to the Presiding Officer. Who is the energy house of Dynamic Leaders Forum? An enthusiastic public speaker, a great leader, Toastmaster Anand. Over to you Toastmaster Anand.
Thank you very much Sergeant at Arms for setting the tone for this meeting. Toastmasters, fellow Toastmasters and dear guests and hereby I am opening the 255th meeting of the Dynamic Leaders Forum Toastmasters Club. In behalf of this Dynamic Leaders Forum Toastmasters Club, I wish all the women Toastmasters here Happy Woman's Day. Inspired by three women's, the first is Madheshwar, the second thing Ma'am Itra Gandhi, the third our honorable ex-chief minister Ma'am Jalilika. I inspired because of this Tarasam because of his philanthropic attitude, how she has served to the humanity that was unmatchable. And second thing Ma'am Indra Gandhi because of a dare woman whenever I heard from my seniors and my friends, Indra Gandhi, how she has inculcated such a brave attitude. So during the formative years, he always accompanied with his father Nehruji. He go for the all the meetings, she inculcated by imitating, by observing the leadership qualities from the Nehruji. And third our Jalilika ma'am because of a strong administrative quality and the learning agility. See she was being an MP alright, in MP while during the MP there was a library in this Delhi in the parliament. On the second year she became MP, she completed all the books in this library, such a learning agility. I was astonished why as a MP lot of work will be there, how, how she can read, what is the time, what is this a time management? That was a really inspiring personally. So, so once again Happy Woman's Day to all the women Toastmasters. Also this ISC and TT area contest went on very well, it was a great, it was a grand success. My heartfelt thanks to all the role players, our contest chair Toastmaster Lata, our ISC contest master Toastmaster Bindu Map, Sergeant at Arms one Toastmaster Kamakshi and timer one Toastmaster Ruby and timer two Toastmaster Suhasni and our Zoom master Toastmaster Abhinavya and TT contest chair Toastmaster Arthira and Sergeant at Arms two our Toastmaster Savita and my heartfelt thanks to our area director Toastmaster Stheyvee ma'am for the, for his, for our guidance and support and also thanks to all our ex-comp team for the support and guidance. So congratulations to our ISC and TT contestants. So Toastmaster Umamayshuri, our Toastmaster Madupriya and Toastmasters Sonar both in the ISC speech contest as well as the TT contest, they are the winners. So my third announcement is that the renewal is on. I request you please do the renewal before March twenty fifth, March twenty fifth is that cutoff date. So see as Malcolm Gladwell, one of the psychiatrists, one of the eminent psychiatrists, what he says is that the learning is not a one-time process, it is a continuous process of self-discovery, appreciation and acknowledgement. So please enjoy your Toastmaster journey by doing the renewal before March twenty five. So any guest is available now? Any guest, I think no guest is available. So let me hand over the floor to the Toastmaster of the day. Today the Toastmaster of the day is our DTM Durga ma'am. Toastmaster Durga ma'am, she worked for the banking industry and she is the Oracy's reader and she she is a natural lover and also whenever there is a TT, yeah TT session, she delivers or any prepared speech, she delivers. She speaks with more alacrity. Now I am handing over the floor to DTM Durga, over to Toastmaster DTM Durga ma'am.
Thank you Toastmaster Anand, I am really humbled with your introduction. So I would like to wish all the beautiful women here Happy Woman's Day and obviously all the men who are supporting each and every woman in this journey. I am not here today to talk about women equality or women empowerment, rather I am here today to accelerate action so that we can bring out some practical actions, practical steps which should be very pragmatic for every woman to develop. So with that motto, so why I have selected this theme for, because for 2025 as for the International Women's Day, the Accelerate Action has been selected as a theme. As per the World Economic Forum, if you don't believe, it will take next five more generations which means almost 130 years, more than 130 years it will take for women and men to have the equal, the women equality or the parity of gender in the world. So considering that, how we can accelerate this so that we can achieve even in the next generation probably? So that our upcoming generation will be benefited with women more empowered with equally paid and equally treated with lot of opportunities in terms of whatever they aspire for. So with that note, today we will be having three segments as per the Toastmasters. We have first one is the prepared segment, second one the table topic section and the third one would be the evaluation. So with that note, I am going to introduce the general evaluator for today. So before calling the general evaluator, I would like to pass on one special message to Toastmaster Bindu. The creative woman behind this background, you could all see the background who has designed, so let's give applause. So the very first thing starts from home or at office, the more, the most creativity comes from women. It will come very naturally because we do have more patience or resilience to stay focused to do something like handling the daily chores or it might be anything comes up with that beautiful drawing, any masterpiece that you create in our day-to-day life. So with that note, let me introduce the next brilliant woman who I, whom I admire for her sweet voice as the first one, the second one, the sincerity that she carries away in each and every endeavor that she do. For an example, last term she was VP and this term VPPR, right? So even though she is not well, she is traveling, she is always take that in the dedicated, the step, individual step and efforts to take care of everything. Whether the meeting goes seamlessly, all the role players are in, the flyers are rolled out, so that shows her diligence. So I am very happy to welcome Toastmaster Savita, General Evaluator. So today, for today's theme, I have asked all the women one common question and men another common question, so for today's role player. For Savita, I have asked what is one action you have taken in your life that made you very proud? So for that she told, she has accepted challenges, she has calculated risks, giving priority to her health and fourth one, accepting things as it comes and let go few things which she can't control. So because of these four points, she have, she has really helped her to travel US alone. This also has helped her to be self-reliant and independent in her own way. So I am very proud to call Toastmaster Savita, the self-reliant and independent woman to take over the General Evaluator segment, over to you Toastmaster Savita.
Thank you so much Toastmaster, distinguished Toastmaster Durga for providing a wonderful introduction of myself. I am always, I mean, I feel I am cloud nine now, so thank you so much. So having said that, today I am doing a general evaluator role. Before going to my role, I would like to wish Happy Woman's Day to each and every person in this group. And I would like to wish our fellow men's Toastmaster also to their wives' mothers a very Happy Woman's Day. I think because of them only they are sitting here and attending our session, thank you so much. So as a general evaluator, my job is to evaluate the overall session of the meeting from the start to the end before and after the meeting. So in order to help me out, I would like to call the today's evaluator, timer, Toastmaster Abhinavya. Toastmaster Abhinavya, she is a dancer as we all know, student of agricultural business management and she is very fond of bat mitten and she is a trekking enthusiastic. I think this happened because she stayed in Kashmir, I believe, I hope that is one of the reason. Apart from that, I asked one question. What does she gets inspired from a woman or any fellow lady with whom she is working? That was my question. She says that I am always in the awe of the extent women can go to support another woman. The way they uplift each other without hesitation, turning competition into candidate. So that's a wonderful thought, Toastmaster Abhinavya, over to you. Thank you for sharing your insights on the inspiring woman, thank you.
First of all, thank you so much General EValuator for such a sweet introduction as well as asking me such a sweet question and Happy Women's Day to each one of the women present here. As timer, my job is to time the various speeches in today's proceedings. I will reuse a system of signaling to assist the speakers in casing their presentations and in ending them on time. For prepared speeches, at five minutes I shall show green card, at six minutes I shall show yellow card, at seven minutes red card. Today we are having a ten to twelve minute speech as well, so at ten minutes I will be showing Dean, eleven minute, yellow and twelve minute red card. For table topic session, at one minute green card, one minute thirty seconds yellow card and a two minutes red card. For evaluation session, at two minutes green card, at two minute thirty seconds yellow card and a three minutes red card. I will provide my report when called upon by the General Evaluator. I also request each one of you to follow the timing given in the agenda and stick to the timing so that we can end our meeting on time. Thank you and over to you General Evaluator.
Thank you so much Toastmaster Abhinavya for briefing your role. The second person which I would like to introduce is the Accountant. So that role is taken by Toastmaster Janaki. So Toastmaster Janaki is an educator, writer, reader, mother and cancer survivor, fond of writing and one second, something happened, fond of writing and follower of habit consistency. So I asked her the same question, what she gets inspired about another woman? She said, the smile which carries every emotion within them, that's so true, I totally echo you. Even though there is lot of pain, we women can carry with the beautiful smile, thinking that it should not hurt others. I totally agree with you, over to you Toastmaster Janaki to brief up about your role.
Thank you General Evaluator, Toastmaster Savita and thank you for the question because it's quite little person. And good afternoon fellow Toastmasters and dear guests. As your accounter today, I'll be listening to each one of you very carefully and note the use of illegible words and sounds like ah hmm ye and phrases as and well part you and so. Also, I mean, and little little pauses which are unintentional to the concert. I shall submit my report when called upon by the General Evaluator, over to the General Evaluator.
Thank you so much Toastmaster Janaki for briefing up about your role. The next person I would like to call upon is Toastmaster Bindu. She is a certified soft skilled, a child psychology and counseling and a Montessori tutor, a handwriting writing and Phoenix trainer, a business English trainer as well, a decade of experience as a teacher and administrator. She has been with the Toastmaster for quite a long time, which we can see through the number of awards she got. One triple crown and pathway celebrity thrice, outstanding VP and rock star twice. So I asked her the same question, what makes her, I think I didn't get that, okay, I, okay, I got the answer. I admire women who are bold, strong and resilient. So this is the answer which I got when I asked what inspires you the most with the other women? Over to you Toastmaster Bindu to brief up about your role, thank you.
Thank you General Evaluator, Toastmaster Savita. Today I am here as a grammarian. And yeah, to introduce the word of the day, it is alacrity. Definition of the alacrity is as in willingness cheerful readiness to do something. So the usage will be like this, having just acquired his driver's license that morning, the teen agreed to alacrity, with alacrity to drive his cousin to the airport. Anybody wants to use it in the sentence, any volunteers?
When Vice President Education, when Vice President Education asked for the role to take up in today's meeting, I accepted the role of evaluator with alacrity.
Superb, superb, nice, anybody else wants to try instantly like this, something like this? Okay, thank you, you can use it during your speeches. And I am also the idiom master of the day, so I have a very good idiom which I was impressed when I was reading and when Savita messaged me, I thought I will put the same idiom there which will suit the theme actually. So taming the whispers of the storm. Meaning to handle a difficult or chaotic situation with calmness and compassion. We can use it like despite all the circumstances, she remained calm, taming the whispers of the storm and kept the team focused on their goals. Anybody wants to try?
Tell it.
Yes.
Toastmaster teacher has the art of taming the whispers in the storm. It helps us to convert our reserved behavior into the desired one.
Thank you, that was very nice. I would like to go with the theme with one more sentence here. All the women's here and all over the world, we tame the whispers of the storm when we fall into certain situations, right? Do you all agree with me? Thank you and now I'll be noting down all your good usages, not so good usages as well as I'll be putting up a virtual backdrop behind me as a timer, as a timer does often with the word of the day and idiom of the day so that the speakers can just look at the screen and just use it when they really wanted to put it inside their speeches, okay? Thank you and I'll be back with my report when called upon by the General Eval.
Thank you so much Toastmaster Bindu and you proved that you are a teacher. So let's see how the general evaluation will be and the next person I would like to introduce is our Listening Master. A newbie in our group and we warmly welcome to our group and this is your first role. So we, we wish you very, all the very best as well. So who is Savita? Savita is an Ayurvedic doctor from Therupati, Andhra Pradesh specializing in metria medica, MD in Ayurveda and has a deep interest in the study of medical plants and their therapeutic applications. Apart from a profession, she enjoys playing chess and reading books. I asked her the same question, what inspires the most with other women? And she said that her inspiration is a professor. The way she treats and the way she does a work treating the patients inspires the most and the diagnosis that she provides, a professor provides is exceptional. Additionally, our kindness and dedication has inspired a lot. That's wonderful and also she says that a professor is a gold medalist. It would be great to know her name also, Toastmaster Savita, over to you to explain about the Listening Master role, thank you.
Thank you General Evaluator, Toastmaster Savita for a great introduction. Good afternoon fellow Toastmasters, key note, speakers and guests. My professor name is Dr. Rainu Dixit. Thanks for the question. So I am Toastmaster Savita, playing the role of Listening Master today. Being a good listener is just, as just important as being a good speaker. As a Listening Master, I will note interesting tidbits of information from any of the speakers and ask questions near the end of the meeting. The purpose of this role is to help people become more focused and also to have fun. Meet you all towards the end of the meeting, over to you General Evaluator, Toastmaster Savita, thank you.
Dear board that, thank you so much Toastmaster Savita for elaborating your Listening Master role. Now over to Toastmaster of the day, distinguished Toastmaster Durga with regard to the team, I will provide the report once called upon, thank you.
Thank you Toastmaster Savita for disseminating the roles and responsibilities along with your tag members, tagel members. So now before moving on to the first segment for the day, prepared speech, let me talk about the very first practical step that we can take, everyone would take to accelerate action in women's growth. So here everyone thinks about, okay, we need to give more power to women, more title, more pay, pay package so that we'll have a gender parity in terms of the role that they take, the position that they take. Rather than thinking about their ego goals, it's not only for women in general. So we can talk about the growth goals. So growth goals here is about becoming successful and ego goals is about looking successful. So your ego, ego goals were the name that you get, position, title that you hold. Whereas the growth goals are something, how you become successful by improving yourself, by upskilling yourself and also empowering other women or other men to sign as well. So the moment your growth goals are taken care, if you have a continuous improvement, continuous upskilling, the ego goals, the name, the title, position that you all wish for will land on your plate seamlessly as a by-product. So this particular aspect I want to bring, rather than talking about why women, there is less percentage of leadership roles that women takes in the higher position or it might be they are giving the less package. Rather than that, why don't we empower each and every woman with right skill development in terms of empowering with the probably funding them, sponsoring them like a sponsorship or mentorship it might be? Whichever we can do as such, as much we can so that we can uplift every woman, especially from the underprivileged background, it would really helpful for them. So here the message is, the moment you focus on the growth goals of continuous improvement, giving them the right skills development, the rest all would come as a by-product, so no need to worry about the title and package, pay package etc. So with this, with that note, let me introduce my first speaker for today. So we have first speaker Toastmaster Manoj. Toastmaster Manoj is, is an IT consultant. He is also loves to walk in the woods and a table tennis player. He is a member of Beckham Communication Toastmaster Club. As I told, I asked one specific question to all the men here. I asked him if you would suggest one action that you take to accelerate women's empowerment, what it would be? I really inspired by the answer he gave, he told, give space and accepting women as they are. Give space and accepting women as they are. That's a wonderful message that he has given as part of today's theme to accelerate action. So before moving on, Toastmaster Manoj is today going to give his project, speech from Project Three, Level Three, Persuasive Influence. Before calling up him on the stage, let me call his evaluator Toastmaster Felix to read out the speech objectives. Over to you Toastmaster Felix.
Thank you Toastmaster of the day. Today my target speaker Toastmaster Manoj is going to give a speech in the pathways of persuasive influence and level three project. The purpose of this project is for the member to practice writing and delivering a speech that inspires others. The purpose of the speech is for the member to inspire the audience. I wish the best of luck to Toastmaster Manoj for his speech and over to Toastmaster Felix.
So let me call upon Toastmaster Manoj. Uncle Vasu, Uncle Vas, Uncle Vasu, Toastmaster Manoj, over to you, the stage is yours.
How are you all?
Yes, on top of the world, I said bye Toastmaster Madheshwar.
I'm pretty sure many of those people who have unmuted themselves, they might be thinking or having a classic Chris Anne's response, I'm okay, maybe I'm fine. But when you ask this question to a wrong person, my grandmother, bloody hell, just buckle up for fifteen minutes TED Talk before your eyes blink, she will say the weather is dreadful, the neighbor's dog bark all night and don't ask about the inflation or the soaring price of onion. Good afternoon fellow Toastmasters and guests. Not everyone is like my grandmother. But it was my uncle Vasu, my childhood primary school teacher. He is my mentor, he is my guide and person, someone who can do anything and everything. One of the darkest secret of my life is that he used to sign my report card as well of the same school where I failed miserably many a times in my studies because I was always been a backbencher. But he helped me a lot many times and uplifted me whenever I require the kind of help. Now I moved cities, I moved countries and go different places but uncle Vasu was always been in touch with me. Not to give any advices, not to fix my cricket bat or flat tires or flickering Christmas trees. But he was there for asking help. He used to ask me a lot of time financial helps, so I used to pay him many a times without asking what is the reason, but this was happened fifteen years back, fifteen years back. He asked me a big sum of money. That was for his daughter Wani, wanted to do architecture engineering. Now I know Wani very well because Wani was a brilliant girl, I want her to fulfill her dream and make her good for her life and good for her family. So I decided to agree to pay some money on that one so that she can attain her future. And we agreed between me and And we agreed between me and Vasu uncle that he will pay me in installment. We had continuous discussions on the phone. Our conversation started to shrink smaller and smaller. And remain like, how are you? I'm fine. We are all fine. That's it. No greetings, no exchange of words, more than that. But more importantly, no money. Weeks turn into month, month turns into year, years turn into decade. There was no sign of money to my bank account. It was up to last year, I decided, I'm not going to get away with this. Because my wife knows, she will shear me apart. And I decided, I'm going to chase up uncle. And his phone numbers got changed, his address got changed. I moved houses and houses, he mostly ate houses, knocked doors, couldn't figure out where is Uncle Vasu's team. I have to make a very deep phone call to figure out where Uncle Vasu was there. I came to know he was residing somewhere more than three hundred kilometers away from my house in a small shanty village. A small house. So I traveled all the way to there, three hundred kilometers to find out, not to Uncle Vasu for my money. Finally, I reached his house. The house was a very century old Victorian house, weathering. And it seems that it survived from few cyclones. But when I opened the gate, I saw Uncle Vasu was sitting there in the varanda. Wow, my money is safe now. So I called closer to him and said, hello, Uncle Vasu. Uncle Vasu was sitting in a wooden rounded chair, having a newspaper, having a newspaper, he was reading the newspaper. And having a red watch in his hand and a red mug of coffee which was finished. So I said, hi, Uncle Vasu. He didn't bother to respond. So I picked the paper and sneaked into it and said, Uncle Vasu, this is Manoj. Hey, I'm fine, without asking anything. So I want to get the conversation going because my money is with Uncle Vasu. I said, Uncle Vasu, when did you move to this new property, new house? He looked at with a bleak face and a very confusing mind and said, which house? Then I said, I wanted to become emotional. It seems the conversations are not going anywhere. I said, Uncle Vasu, where is Wani? Can't see her. And he's more confused. He said, Wani, who? And I was furious. Nerves were getting on me and I wanted to give the scolding of my lifetime on Uncle Vasu. But all of a sudden I heard a sound behind me, someone was footstepping closer to me. And the song echoed like, Mrs. Vasu, he said, Manoj, how are you? Long time. He said, I'm fine. And she disappeared to the kitchen. And me and Vasu again, Uncle Vasu again. I was looking at Uncle Vasu, staring at him. This look funny, he's real. I know he's been, I'm speaking for last fifteen, twenty years. But I was thinking to myself and having the discussion, on earth, where are those red big clock watches on his hand? Then I also went to kitchen with Uncle Wani aunty, have a conversation going on. He said, aunty, why is Uncle Vasu looking so real? He's not saying anything, he's not speaking. But in my mind, I was thinking my money is losing. But then aunty waited for some time. And trying to tweak her sari, the edges of the sari and trying to say something, but then he stopped. But then he asked again, why is Uncle Vasu not responding for so long and why did you move to this new property? And she said, Uncle Vasu was going through some mentors for the last more than years and years. He got something doctors call dementia, dementia, dementia something. I feel that someone taken from there and put me in the iceberg, dropped in the iceberg, I was frozen. She was going through my spines and completely shocked to hear that story. I know she was referring to dementia. But doctor says he will be alright. And then he looked at with a lower voice towards the varanda where Uncle Vasu sitting. You know the watch he was wearing? It's not a watch, it's a tracker to, to track his movement. I had nothing to say to Uncle Vasu, stood there for few more minutes or seconds or hours, then I left the place. Wani aunty said, Uncle, Mrs. Vasu said, stop, stop, I wanted to give you something. He hand over a letter to me. This was written almost ten years ago and wanted to hand over to you. But I leave it to your imagination, what exactly the content of the letter. But you know, mental health is a silent battle. No one would like to speak about it. You don't know next to a person what phase he is going through it. If someone asks you, how are you? We have this classy answer, I'm okay. Because that's the best way to hide your problem. But what if you say and tweak your words? How have you been? Maybe it can break your silence, it can break a door into someone's soul. And peek into it, what is he going through it? Maybe next time with the loud ones, maybe try it, you can figure out. Back to you, Toastmaster, Toastmaster Durga.
Wow, that was a mesmerizing speech from Manoj, Toastmaster Manoj. Well done. So with that, let's move on to the next speech, second speech for the day. To unfreeze us from the frozen speech. So today, the next speaker I have is Toastmaster Sandeep. Toastmaster Sandeep is, he's an explored at heart, a surgeon in mind, a musician in spirit and a speaker in action. When I asked him, what one thing that you do to empower women, he said, we have to empower women by evolve, by evolving with the cultural landscapes and interdependence, not independence. Interdependence and not independence. So with that note, let me, before calling upon his evaluator, evaluator. Today, Toastmaster Sandeep is delivering his speech on Reflect on Your Pathway. The pathway is engaging humor, the last speech in the Pathways project. The timer please note, the time limit is ten to twelve minutes. Okay, with that note, let me call Toastmaster Adira, who is the evaluator for today's speaker. Over to you, Toastmaster Adira.
Thank you, distinguished Toastmaster Durga. So the purpose of this project is for the member to reflect on his growth during the completion of an entire path. And also for the member to share some aspects of his growth during the completion of a path. So all the best to the speaker, Toastmaster Sandeep. Over to you, distinguished Toastmaster Durga.
Thank you, Toastmaster Adira. So now the stage is yours, Toastmaster Sandeep. Over to you.
The human brain starts working the moment you are born and never stops until you stand up and speak in public. How many times have you all experienced it? Anybody? A show of hands? You froze when you started speaking your first words in public? I'm sure all of us have done it. There you are left standing at your audience with the confidence of a goldfish in a shark tank. Yes, my friends, I'm talking about every Toastmaster's graded moments, forgetting your lines. And well, it happened to me on my very first Toastmasters Icebreaker speech. I thought forgetting my lines was impossible. After all, I practiced and practiced, I rehearsed in front of the mirror, my wife. And even a very unimpressed houseplants. But on that fateful day, we were somewhere in the middle of court. I was certainly distracted and retired. But my family was carefully tucked away having their lunch and I was in some corner of a restaurant. I positioned my mobile and I zoomed in and made contact with people just like you. I think Toastmaster Sri Devi was there, Toastmaster Anand was there. And I was convinced I would be giving my award-winning speech on my passion, the topic liver transplantation. The O R has been set, the instruments are set. The stage is set for one of the most exclusive theatres in town, where we explore the mysteries of the human body. It started pretty well for about three minutes and then click. Five seconds went by, ten seconds, my brain turned into a blank PowerPoint slide. Ladies and gentlemen, people fear public speaking more than death. Because at least at a funeral, you're not the one expected to give a speech. It's the awkwardness of standing there, brains blank, hearts raising, just hoping that the ground will just swallow you up or at least give you a script. And that was my first lesson in Toastmasters. Embrace awkward silences. Accept that it happens. Even the greatest speakers forget their lines. The difference is they don't panic, they pivot. Satin Tendulkar, one of the greatest batsmen to walk on a crease off the other cricket field. You think his only job would be in his entire career is not to get out and score a few runs in the process. Two hundred test matches and you know the number of times he's got not out? Just fifty. Four hundred and fifty-one wonders and forty-one times he was not out. So they all fall. So the first step is to smile and own it. Maybe you need just a little bit of time for your brain to do a little bit of reboot. I looked at my audience and said, ah, the dramatic pause, I nailed it. Oh, the funny thing about memory is, I had it yesterday. The audience laughs, you have a few seconds and you pick up the next point like it never happened. Turns out confidence is just pretending your mistakes are intentional. So the second thing, improvise like a pro. In Toastmasters, you are table topic masters to showcase your improvisation skills. Only you and not the audience know the general direction where your speech is heading, right? So let me take you back to the speech where I froze. I don't mind scrubs, my stirrigo and my gloves like a superhero, donning his cape and suit. Playing the cliche plot of defeating evil and saving the world. I forgot the part where some heroes don't wear capes. A tribute to the people who sacrificed their lives during COVID. And so I pivoted. I stepped into the Marvel Universe, liver transplant is my fault, as formidable as they come, and goes back on track. And then there are timeless Toastmasters secrets. Fellow Toastmasters and guests, let me take a while to appreciate how amazing this wonderful audience looks today. And then you can do the water trick, take a sip of water, even if you don't have a glass, you can mime it, they think you're acting the part. And if everything fails, blame the mic. Did the mic get cut off? Lesson number two, listening, your superpower. Listening is just not about hearing words, it's about understanding the message and connecting with the speaker, right? We all know the definition, but of course I had to learn this the hard way. One of my first stable topic session and the question was, I think by Toastmaster Lata, if my memory serves me right. How do you smile to get over a difficult situation? I jumped up full of enthusiasm and confidently started talking about smiling. I knew the anatomy, forty-three facial muscles to frown and just four to smile. Psychology makes it powerful, it tricks the brain into happiness even on tough days. And an emotional connection because it is contagious. One smile can brighten someone's entire day and then happened again, the dramatic pause. I forgot the rest of the question. Smile over the difficult situation, how did I get over it? The starters were done pretty well, the main post was missing. Why? Because I wasn't listening. What did I learn? I learned to listen with curiosity. Don't just wait for your turn to speak, be genuinely interested in what the other speaker is saying. As EpiTeker said, we have two ears and one mouth, so we have to listen twice as much as we speak. Take time to process the topic gives you a chance to reflect on what has been said. That's an excellent question, Toastmaster Lata. And I was thinking of just what you were saying. It actually builds better connection and the speaker actually feels he's being understood and thinks you are fantastic leader as well. And I love the use of the prep, the structured approach to communication. You make a point. What did you do today, Toastmaster Sandeep? Oh, I went to the gym. The reason, I wanted to stay healthy, strong and have more energy throughout the day. Examples, I hit the weights, did some cardio and even pushed myself into my personal best. And although it was tough, it felt amazing afterwards. And to bring back the point again, I went to the gym. So I need to realize that I have to make it a healthy life. So the point, reason, example. So take a moment to ponder what you want to reply. And evaluations are a listening process. Evaluation taught me the distance between hearing and listening. At first, I used to write notes like, good speech, nice voice, great energy. But things have changed over the many speeches. I was doing the engaging humor pathway, so I was turning every misstep into legendary tales. I didn't know how to do that well first because I realized that nobody wants a perfect story. They all want chaos, they all want drama. So I gave a speech about hair and talked about my daily battles with the searing hairlines and brain strands. I went like, when my baby daughter was born, she had a head as smooth as a freshly polished bowling ball, a mother's jean. But now, when my son was born, it was more like me. He came into the world ready for a shampoo commercial. Exaggeration, ladies and gentlemen, have saved me from countless awkward situations. For example, during surgery, I'm working on the liver, my assistant is way senior to me and he has no patience. The surgery was not easy, I slowed down to a snail's place and then I noticed that he was losing patience in me. And I said, I know sir, it is like watching paint dry. And he laughed and just like that, he gave me just a little bit of time that I needed to finish the crucial step of the operation. And so how to master the art of exaggeration? Start with the truth. But the best exaggerations have a grain of reality in them. For example, I love bathroom singing and my wife takes it up a notch. Honey, your showerhead will sue you for emotional distress. And my daughter takes it even bigger during one of my routines. Papa, I came running, I thought someone was strangling my cat. Life is better when you embellish it and selling it's like it's hundred percent true. And my final lesson, lesson number four, audience matters. Toastmasters Sri Devi, Toastmaster Felix were there and then this room, the A R Humor Speech Contest. There are people in this room who have children and there are people who do not have children. And they think they know these couples who want to start a little family and have little versions of them running around. Oh, I think you'll make an amazing mom. Oh honey, you'll make an amazing dad as well. But they do not know, they do not know how things, difficult, difficult things are going to get in their lives. And it's the same frustration in any parent's life. And then I paused for dramatic effect and waited for the laughs to come. I waited and I waited some more. It's the sympathy cough somebody, I'll take it. The room was so quiet, I could hear my confidence shatter to pieces. But if you are talking to a room full of fresh of out of college I T engineers, it will never hit the same. You've got to tell them, you know how difficult it was, your, until your, your code will work perfectly in staging. The moment it goes into production, it breaks down at two A M. The one thing that I realized in all my Toastmasters journey, the audience is just. The thousands of people watching you when you're giving your I S C championship speech. It happens in everyday life. It's convincing your maid when she's not going to get a salary hike. Or negotiating with your kids for just thirty more minutes of man, or calming a patient terrified of surgery. Or when the S A A robotically recites the same worn out Toastmasters introduction for the five hundredth time. Every interaction is a stage and every person is an audience. So can I ask you all a question? Who is the most powerful person in an orchestra? Microsoft. Going to give you ten more seconds. The most person who appears on the screen is, sorry?
Repeat the question please.
Who is the most powerful person in an orchestra? Conductor, okay. Amazing, but the conductor never makes a sound. You know that? His picture appears in the front of the C D, conducting an orchestra, but it never makes a sound. His power depends on his ability to make other people proud. So as a speaker, your, your power is to awaken possibility in other people. And it's never about you. Now, how do you know that a person is listening to you? You look at the sparkle in their eyes. So if the eyes are shining, and I'm looking at all of you, if your eyes are shining. And your eyes are brightening up, that means they're actually listening to you. So what am I doing wrong when your children have the dull look? Or what are my fellows doing when their not, eyes are not shining? What should I do something then? So Toastmasters in short. Is not just a life skill. It is life itself.
Thank you Toastmaster Sandeep, that was a well orchestrated speech about all your pathways, the speeches. Kudos to, kudos to your speech. Thank you. So we have one small change for today. Uh, I'll be calling out the first speech evaluator, evaluate speaker one, Toastmaster Manoj. As he will be leaving soon. Um, can I call Toastmaster Felix to give? Yeah, over to you, Toastmaster.
Thank you Toastmaster of the day. How are you Toastmaster Manoj? How are you, my dear fellow Toastmasters? Yes, it was a great opening from your side. And you shrugged the cord with the audience with your engaging and compelling personal story. One of the strongest points I liked in your speech is the boldness and the confidence in the delivery of your speech. It's your personal state, story. With so many changes in the emotions, it's like first you started. With Uncle Vasu, the fascination, the emotion, the fascination, he was your mentor guy. Then after you exchanged the money to him, then it didn't come back, then you are furious towards him. Then you went and met him, then you came to know about the situation. Then finally you changed your behavior towards a friendliness approach. Throughout, there was the, the emotions changed throughout your speech, it was very well connected with the audience. Second thing I liked in your speech, your call to action, like you started with, how are you? And ended your speech with the same message, how are you? The how are you, it's not just simply fine, okay, it has more meaning than that of, that action. Because Uncle Vasu, when we heard about the title, we are wondering what you're going to say. But it really ended with a good message, call to action to the audience. Some of the improvements I want to add in your speech, like. There are so many characters involved, like Uncle Vasu, Vani and the auntie. But throughout your speech, I could find only Toastmaster Manoj. Because the variations between the characters when there was a conversation. Like after three hundred kilometers you travel. In that I want to add some gestures like, okay, it's being online meeting, we are restricted, confined in a single place portion. But you have student delivered your speech, we could have witnessed your three hundred kilometers travel. Like it, it was in the same portion we witnessed. This should have been added in your, incorporate in your next speeches. Like, and there was a conversation going on, like, uh, you, it's. After so many years, you are seeing your uncle. And you came to know about you, this portion of dementia. There, that conversation, you would have evoked so much of emotion, there was the opportunity to evoke more emotions. There was some change in the characters and some interactions. Definitely it added more impact and lasting impact with the audience. So overall, the speech, it was very compelling and engaging with some more refinements of. Stood and delivery and the personal interactions with the various characters. Definitely this speech will be on the top of the world, over to you, Toastmaster of the day.
Thank you Toastmaster Felix for that insightful evaluation. Um, so with that note, let's move on to the next segment for today. So we have a very interesting segment for today. The second one would be the impromptu segment. So to, to do, to do this, uh, say, impromptu segment, we have a very special person. Toastmaster Wignes. So Toastmaster Wignes, who hailed from Ramanadapuram, he is currently doing his business. And he's interested in reading books, et cetera. So one thing personally I would like to add, uh, about Toastmaster Wignes. Being a newly joined member, his, the alacrity that he brings to take up any new roles is really admirable. I think he deserves a big round of applause, he is very engaging, very active and picking up all the roles. So Toast, when I asked Toastmaster Wignes. One thing that you do to empower women, his action was. Economic independence through skill development, economic independence through skill development. Thank you Toastmaster Wignes for that insightful action that you have given for all the women empowerment here. So with that note, let, yeah, with that note, let me hand over the stage. Uh, to Toastmaster Wignes to carry out table topics segment, over to.
Hello fellow Toastmasters and guests, I am extremely delighted to be your table topic masters today. Do you know why? Because every time I attend the contest, I can hear my own heartbeat, but today I get to listen to yours. But unlike me, you have all stepped up and ready to take on the challenge voluntarily. And I am ready to see your brilliant sign and watch your, watch you deliver your A game. To make this experience more engaging, I have created curated contents with every contestant in mind. Prompts that will inspire your creativity, showcase your individuality and let your ideas take center stage. Finally, we are all together to play an exciting game. Let's create table topic masters filled with laughter, learning and lasting memories. And one last thing. Don't give me a serious look like this, I will forget my script. Okay, first, before I call upon our first contestant. It reminds me of one thing. Whatever wall you throw at him, he, he will make it to six. So let's welcome Toastmaster Felix to the stage. And I'm going to give you a. I'm going to give you a question, uh, that will be in emoji, okay? You have to speak the topic with those emojis. I have put it in the chat box. Your question is simple. Running B and fast.
Toastmaster Wignes. Yeah, Toastmaster, what is my question? It's running B fast.
Yeah, yeah, bro, running B fast, B, running fast.
So I have to connect this with some story, okay, right? Thank you Toastmaster, uh, Table Topic Master for this wonderful. Innovative, wonderful and innovative creation. Like, last week. When I visited Toastmaster Wignes' house. I found honey bee was just behind the tree, so. There. We came to know about like, then I asked how long this honeybee is here? Then he used to say like, it has been for so many years. And I asked him, uh, what do you, what, what is the good thing you are learning from the honeybee? And then he said like, uh, uh, Toastmaster Felix. Whenever morning I just wake up and see this honeycomb. I, I used to feel like, uh, how, uh, brisk bees are. Like it's always brisk and it's always working. And it's converting the normal saliva into the tasteful honey. It's the purpose of life, like that he said so many insightful thoughts. And then I asked him, okay. Uh, what happens if someone hits this honeybee with the stone, it will attack them or all the people nearby like that? Then. The curiosity arose, then the nearby fellow, what he, when he heard our conversation, he just. Took the stone and hit that honeycomb. And all the honeybees started flying from the home and it left that person. And started chasing Toastmaster Wignes and mine. And then we started running towards the Toastmaster of the day, Mandir, sorry, Durga Mandir, near his home. There, we just entered and locked the door and then I asked Wignes. Wignes, you see, these kind of situations we never experience, okay, we love honey. And we have to taste it, that's all, we should not go and venture and discuss so many things. This is this honeycomb mandal, okay? So this is the great learning, you enjoy the honey, you taste it, even though the. In recent is taste, but don't go to the process area because it's sometimes harm you also. Over to you, Table Topic Master.
Super performance, Toastmaster Felix, uh, even though B is chasing you, you still hit a six. And. Before I welcome our next, next participant, one punchline comes to my mind, powerful people come from powerful places. So he always, he never failed, failed to amaze us with the power packed performance. Let's welcome Toastmaster Anant. Sir. Your topic is, if you, if you could time travel to meet your younger, younger self, what advice would you give?
Okay.
Time travel to meet your younger self, what advice would you give?
Yes. So I'm thinking about my younger self, if you go and time travels to that, what advice I will give? I already told that such a ridiculous guy, when I was young, I never obey. I never take bar. Bar, alright, if I take bar, never go to school, never go to tuition, it was a completely difficult child. You showed A D H D currently, attention defect hyperactive disorder. At that time itself, I am A D H D, alright, because of reading signs, now I understood that I have got A D H D. Very impulsive behavior, if my mother or my father show authority, I show resistance to authority. I know, I am very dark. Even the studies have been shown that if the A D H D is not treated properly, as per the research. What says is that it lead to delicacy behavior, contact disorder. See that childrens are running away from home, what does it mean? That means you are such a naughty girl, boy, I was that. So because of certain failure, because of my academic failure, I scored very less. All my people have went to the professional post, I was alone. That time, I'm going to that time, see Anant, you have wasted your time at any age. See, now you have got realized. Now you have come up higher the ladder in terms as a, now you're working as a professional, why you have wasted? Right, this is the way, see how the people have suffered with you. See, think about your father as well as your mother, how much you are tortured, you are given in that, please empathize with them. That time you have, you have given that much of cruelty, you have showed that much of hostility to the father, mother. Uh, and also the relatives, everyone, authority figures, please at least empathize with them. Now make them feel very happy, this is the, one of the advice I give to them. I realized, right, I have changed. So this is the advice I, if I go to that place, I, right, when I want to give that advice. Thank you very much for giving us such a creative topic, over to you.
Wonderful performance, Toastmaster Anant sir. So today only I realized that you and me are same. So I want to call the next participant, his childlike curiosity inspires me always, let's welcome Toastmaster Madhavan sir. Your topic is, what's a personal achievement you are most proud of? What's your, what's a personal achievement you are most proud of?
Happy evening. Yes, are you, are you able to hear me?
Yes, sir.
Happy evening, Toastmasters, and a special good evening to my table topic speaker, who gave me a very good topic. I was born and brought up in a village called Pillaipakam near Shriaram Budur. I, I studied in Tamil medium school throughout till my twelfth. Then I moved to, uh, Chennai for my higher education. I was very much afraid to communicate with people, how to talk. Because there are people are talking very fluent in English and struggling, so over a period of time, I cope up. And then I made many attempts to come out successful in public service examination, I, but I failed. Finally, I got an opportunity, I got a tricks of trade from one of my friends, which helped me. To study the, what are the skillset required to compete the examination? And I joined Indian School of Banking and I come out successful in various exams like. Uh, government examinations, banking service, et cetera. Finally, I was selected, uh, in a United India Insurance Company. Then after some time, let us say fifteen years, I quit. And joined a private sector company called Royal Sundaram Insurance Company. Finally, I retired, I had head vigilance. So it is a great achievement, starting from a rural background. Facing the various challenges in communication, then coming to a, very, very expected and, and also during the time. To very, very lucrative government employment, which I resigned and joined a private sector company. And now I joined a Toastmaster to improve my communication skill. This is my achievement I felt, I'm very happy about it, not only I've become a Toastmaster, I also made my daughter a Toastma- Toastmaster. She is doing exceedingly well, this is my personal achievement. Thank you and wavo to Table Topic Master.
Super sir. I want to call the next part, participant, it is pleasure to introduce an experienced Toastmaster. Who has inspired many with her speeches. Let's welcome Toastmaster Sri Devi Srinivasanam. Your topic is? Your topic is, what's the best piece of advice you have ever received? What's the best piece of advice you have ever received?
The best piece of advice I have ever received. Advice we get often from different people at different point of time. And I would say I have got lot of advices. The first one that I would remember always is when I, when I was about to start my journey as a school people leader. So I was a naughty child, you won't believe like I was like a kind of rowdy in the school. I, I'm sure you will not be able to believe this with the way I show my face and other things, but I was kind of my school and teachers didn't want me to be the leader. But somehow I was quite popular among the students and I was elected as the leader. So one of the teacher called me and she told me something that really stays in my mind. She said, listen, people give you responsibility so that you learn something more about it and execute it better. So I couldn't understand at that time, but later point of time I realized that she, she was not trusting me at all and so she thought that that leadership role would bring in the responsibility in me. So I would say, yeah, that, that advice is still staying in my mind. And the second advice I, that I received was when I was pregnant. I felt so special, I was carrying my child, the first son. I felt like you know one queen and all that. So one of our relative uncle, he called me and told, listen, giving birth to a child is happening every minute, every second in India. So you don't think yourself as somebody great and you don't carry yourself to, um, what to say, like a queen. You are just another woman who is going to deliver a baby, just like a person who is on the street, who is working in the buildings or construction area or wherever it is. So don't consider yourself as too high. So just take up this journey and enjoy the process, be normal and bring your child in a normal condition. So that was a very good advice, I think I felt at that point of time. And yeah, I could remember these two. There are few others as well, probably next time when you ask me, I will tell, otherwise my timer will disqualify me. Thank you and over to you.
Thank you ma'am, excellent speech. And I want to call next participant. I practice, I stumble, but she wants English like a pro. Do, do you know who I am going to call? So if I could go time travel, I, I would go to their school and talk like her. I would like to call Toastmaster Janagi.
Uh, one minute. Whenever, when I am talking, you will have another person talking with me, don't mistake it, okay? I have my son who is very eager to talk with you all. Unfortunately, he cannot hear, I have the Bluetooth. Don't mistake me, do start with the question, please. Uh, Vignesh and you type.
Just wait, I'm going to give a emoji game, okay? So already Felix played that game. So you just see the emoji and talk for two minutes. Just wait. Your emojis, your emojis are rocket, moon and astronaut. Rocket, moon and astronaut.
Easy one only. I always have a fascination towards a lot of writing basically and my go-to genre is not always science fiction. But whenever I watch something great related to that particular genre, I am always happy. Like when the West world is showing a different world and Interstellar is giving me a moonwalk. But one thing always stays with me that whenever you wake up, you cannot stand in. And I always feel you do something great. That, that doesn't rise you into a rocket. I and turning ourselves to be a moon for somebody is always kind of helpful. One morning when I was just wa- waking up and finding myself in the place related or close to a moon, just felt me, oh wow, things are going great. But that's when I know my life has been rocketed with lot, lot of roles which have been taken personally. And I'm not only the only astronaut who has been doing it and lot more are there. So it's my wish for everybody a happy Women's Day. Thank you.
Nice speech ma'am. So I'm going to do a debate game, I need two participants, who wants to join? I think I'm, I'm meeting, everyone is going to raise hands. I may get confused. To choose whom?
Can I nominate Toastmaster Adira?
Yeah. Yeah.
Sure.
Who wants to participate? No one is, no one wants to participate, okay? Uh, I will give a questions.
Toastmaster Sandeep is waiting.
Okay, Sandeep and I need another participant. Okay. First, uh, have you talked to, okay, okay, Sri Deva. Uh, Sandeep, you have delivered, delivered an electrified performance. So, uh, the debate topic is, are cartoon only for kids, are cartoons only for kids?
So I am speaking to for or against?
You should talk past two things.
One second, I just.
You should talk cartoon only for kids.
Can I start or how is it going?
Yes, you can start.
One minute, I think Toastmaster Adira cannot hear. Uh, can you just repeat it now I am able to hear this?
Toastmaster Vignesh, you want to give the topic?
Are cartoon only for kids? You need to talk about.
So who is for and against?
Sri Deva ma'am is going to talk against the topic like cartoon uh for adults also.
Okay.
Okay, so.
You already caught me on my, can we start?
Sandeep, please go ahead.
You already caught me on my wrong foot. I just watched the cartoon and I logged in here. But you know what? Cartoons are for kids because they dumb it down. Alright, so it has to be straight lines, black and white, no shades, no gray colors. They, they have to really dumb it down. And if an adult is preferred to go into that kind of world, into that kind of environment, he's going to, he's going to see the world as black and white. He's going to see uh people as heroes and villains. He's going to see there's a, there's, there's love in the air or there's villain who's trying to take away the absolute interest. And that's how the cartoon world is all made out to be. I know things are changing these days, they're trying to mend that, they're going to break barriers. Disney is all being called out for uh pushing transgender and all that. But in the end of the day, it is a medium for kids so that they can understand the world in plain colors. And if you go to the real world, it's hardly anything like that. It's not the make-believe world that the cartoons portray so well. It is, it is a mishmash, it is a think tank, it is a, it is a cacophony, it is absolute chaos. And that thing the cartoons will never show it. And if you're doing this as an adult, shame on you because you are not growing up. And I would like to, to turn off that, that, that Marvel series that you're watching or, or the, or the Dilbert in the room or whatever and turn it off and switch on the real life. Over to you.
Adira, you want to go ahead?
Uh, first Q ma'am, I follow you.
Okay, so Toastmaster Sandeep, I really oppose whatever you said. Just imagine creativity is something that always is to think about and beyond. If you are in the real world, you will never get an opportunity to think about and beyond because your reality will pull you down and put you in the places where you are ought to be. But only when you unleash the mind and then go beyond thinking and then use your creativity to bring whatever is impractical, impossible and explore wherever you want to explore, whatever, wherever you want to get inside. In fact, as a surgeon, I'm, I'm wondering how you are saying this because there are some cartoons that will, magic bus cartoon, that, that has a miniature bus that will get inside the human uh body and then go to the different parts and then fight, does the surgery and all. I think this might be the inspiration for the future surgeries, right? So I think it's already there. So how can we say that this idea is shameful, shameful for the adults to watch? It is absolutely awesome idea for each and every one of us. In fact, we should watch cartoons. In fact, each and every one of us should create cartoons for all the problems that we have in our life. What do you say Toastmaster Adira?
So I'm against that topic, right? And it's okay, I'll say against the topic. So uh like in our college, I can only speak about my college because I have not, no work experience. So I'll talk about my college, there you will have a lot of cartoon characters in my class. Now often a few of the professors, you can associate it with some cartoons. The students you can associate with some cartoons. Otherwise, you will be in a pressure cooker. So like, if, when we are adults, we are grown up, etc. We watch cartoons, it's kind of a stress buster. At least when someone is scolding you for something because something went wrong, it is not your responsibility. At least you can replace that person with some other cartoon like a Tom. Uh, what, Kalia and Chhotavim, etc. At least you can feel better that he might be scolding someone else. We can enjoy that he is giving us an act, etc. So what I feel is that if, even if you are a grown up, cartoon can be a stress buster. Also sometimes what happens, like when you watch cartoons, if you are frustrated, you will start scolding that cartoon character. Like why the Tom is going behind the Jerry, can't it just sit down? Why is it, why is Jerry going and disturbing the Tom, etc? Then your frustration goes out. It doesn't be that, but only cartoons are only for the kids. Even grownups can watch them, it's a stress buster. So if you ask me, I'm not going to stop watching cartoons because it is one way uh like where I can at least feel that the person is not scolding me. He is scolding himself and giving me a visual treat. Thank you. Over to you, uh TT Master.
So you have done the great job, you three all spoken well. Uh, Janagi ma'am, do you want to talk?
Um, Vignesh, Toastmaster Vignesh, we are running out of time, can we stop?
Because she asked me, okay, uh, let's finish our session. You, you have done a great job. Thank you.
Thank you Toastmaster Vignesh for the wonderful topics. You invigorated everyone's interest. Uh, with that, let's move on to the next segment. It's evaluation segment. So I would like to hand over the stage back to general evaluator of the day, Toastmaster Savita. Over to you Toastmaster.
Thank you so much, distinguished Toastmaster of the day, Durga ma'am, for giving me the control. I would like to call upon Toastmaster Adira to evaluate Toastmaster Sandeep's speech today. Toastmaster Adira.
Am I audible and audible?
Yes.
Okay, so congratulations Toastmaster Sandeep for completing this pathway that is engaging humor. Like you started on with your own story, like how you lost and like you forgot a few sentences, etc. In your speech and then you were actually giving tips that how to handle the awkward silences, how you can like just say the mic is not working, I'm not able to see this, etc. And you can handle all those things, you are giving us a lot of tips, etc. And like, uh, the first question that you asked, have you forgotten a few lines? You actually captured all the audience's attention then and also like you were talking about your singing in the shower and how your wife and your daughter reacts to it. It like you were able to capture everyone's attention and keep everyone's focus on your speech. So like if I have to speak a few positives, it will be a longer list. But I would say there are a few, oh, one point that you can actually work on, that is the camera angle. Like when you're giving speech, we were able to understand that you're sitting then standing. So there was a difference in that and also like as you can see my, now my actions are being hidden. So when you are giving a speech, don't keep that background and also like before that you can just keep this camera bit away and check if your actions are being cut. For me, your actions were being cut, so I'm not able to get the exact essence that you are trying to say. I know that you are using some hand gestures, but it is not C. And one way to challenge yourself is as you are giving a tip, like Toastmasters is a place where you learn to improvise. So when you're giving a quick speech, try to give questions in between also. So based on their responses, you can actually align it with your speech and take it forward. Because even if everybody are focused on your speech, give a few seconds for them to respond. So they will feel more into your story and they will know like, they will feel that you, uh, they are listening to someone who is just deciding. So you can work on this thing, so in a nutshell, I can say that you did a very fabulous job and like even I find it very difficult to make that humor and speech mix, but you were able to do it flawlessly and I would like to see a further project in parties. Thank you, over to you, a general evaluator.
Thank you so much Toastmaster Adira. I missed to introduce Toastmaster Adira, let me do that privilege. She loves flute, she loves playing flute. Uh, she loves to read novels and she is, she watches animation uh every time and love to gather facts, she is an MBA student. Uh, the question which I asked her, the woman she inspires, she has a long list. So among that resilience and mental strength tops the most. Thank you so much Toastmaster Adira for providing that evaluation to Toastmaster Sandeep. I'm pretty sure he will take it, take it and do the best going forward. So moving on, let me ask timer, timer Toastmaster Abhinavya, can you please provide the report?
Once again, a very good evening to all the guests and Toastmasters present here. So I'm presenting my timer report. In the prepared speech session, Toastmaster Manoj took eight minutes forty seconds and Toastmaster Sandeep took thirteen minutes and thirty seconds. In evaluation session, Toastmaster Felix took three minutes fourteen seconds and Toastmaster Adira took two minutes twenty-five seconds. Coming to the table topic session, Toastmaster Felix took two minutes thirty seconds, Toastmaster Anand took two minutes thirty seconds, Toastmaster Madhavan took two minutes four seconds, Toastmaster Sri Devi in her first table topic speech, she took two minutes thirty seconds. Toastmaster Janaki took one minute thirty-nine seconds, Toastmaster Sandeep took one minute fifty-eight seconds, Toastmaster Adira took one minute twenty-six seconds and Toastmaster Sri Devi in her debate. and toastmaster Sri Devi in her debate session took one minute seventeen seconds so I present conclude my timer report and over to you general
thank you so so much toastmaster Abhinavya now I would like to call upon toastmaster Janaki uh toastmaster Janaki I think you will have share access if you don't to let me know uh I can request Abhinavya to give that
I do thank you so much I personally think everybody's favorite word for this meeting is than and so because I've been constantly hearing people using than 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 and so 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 it's so it's 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 quite natural for picking up those words because those two words are very easy words it's an unconscious mistakes that can be avoided and this is my report TM Abhinavya didn't have any filler words congrats to her I wish to congrats TM Sabitha TM Manoj TM Vignesh and TM Adira for not having fillers word rest of them had few fillers word and comments you will break the lap of value and thank you so much
thank you so much uh toastmaster Janaki for that crisp report we'll definitely ensure we'll improve on that uh moving forward is the next person to give uh the report is toastmaster Bindu on grammarian and idiom master toastmaster Bindu over to you
thank you toastmaster Savita just let me share my screen hope my screen is visible yeah so the word of the day as I do master the grammarian today the word of the day was used by toastmaster Anan during his preceding officer's address before I introduce the word uh so I have noted it down and then toastmaster Felix toastmaster Janaki and distinguished toastmaster Durga used it in the chat and idiom was used by toastmaster Felix and I noted up some good usages and phrases and there are some more words which can be rephrased actually uh which I liked actually how they rephrase that uh that concept I like so I've just noted down these so once uh so toastmaster Manoj in his speech he used accelerate landing on our plate top of the world soaring price of money back venture flickering Christmas trees conversation started to shrink shaky village worrying in newspaper furious dementia silent battle interdependence not dependent uh interdependence not dependent this was a phrase that was used by the speaker and toastmaster Sandeep as we know he used lot of words some I could capture here confidence of a good fish brain turning into blank uh PowerPoint slide embracing awkward silence improvising skills stepping into Marvel universe one smile can brighten an entire day uh structured approach to communication legendary take ins and freshly polished ball when he was trying to describe the head of his baby like scrawled nails place where he wants to just go to some place you know that the phrases were very nicely framed which I like so I thought I'll just put it up here awaken possibility and toastmaster Felix again you shrug the cord with the audience fascination and in the TT session I could find lot as toastmaster Anand always does lot of medical terms and a lot of psychological terms comes up ridiculous ADHD impulsive behavior resistance to authority delinquence disorder authoritative figure and TM Madhavan during his speech used radial challenges and toastmaster Janaki is genre line has been rocked it rocketed which was a very good usage toastmaster Adira again toastmaster Adira didn't use any in between toastmaster Sandeep caught caught me on my rock mishmash toastmaster Sri Devi used unleash so these were uh some of the few I could have missed some more uh so I couldn't list up everything that the speakers are so good today that there were lot of words by I couldn't note every everything down here so thank you for this opportunity and over to general
thank you so much toastmaster Bindu for providing the report now we'll move on to toastmaster Sabita for listening master role so are you eager to get some questions on today's session here we go toastmaster Sabita over to you
thank you to uh general evaluator toastmaster Savita yeah as uh toastmaster Manoj the story who is our guide who is her guide sorry
uncle Vasu
okay uh uncle Vasu suffering from which disease
dementia
dementia how many number of houses mentioned in the story
eight
yeah correct correct as per uh toastmaster Manoj Sandeep during surgery working on which part of the body liver liver yeah ma'am correct ma'am that's it over to you general evaluator toastmaster Savita
that was a crisp one toastmaster Sabita thank you so much in the interest of time so now let me uh let me provide you my evaluation we started meeting on the time kudos to excom team and all the role players so uh surgeon at arms uh toastmaster Abhinavya kicked off the meeting later toastmaster Ranant came in and provided uh wishes to women's day as well as provided some updates on the renewals so we expect all the people to renew uh the membership following that uh amazing theme accelerate action toastmaster of the day Durga took us and has to complete lot of things I think because of shortage of time uh we have to ensure that we stop few things at the right time not because to make everyone feel they are not doing justice but time is time we need to stick on the time that is one of the feedback that I have and all the speakers please do join at least ten minutes early and if you are speaking and talking try to test your laptop angle so that you don't face any kind of a difficulty that is a personal suggestion and moving on uh table topic master it was awesome you incorporated lot of things into one go but because of the interest of time uh we were forced to stop you sorry about that but one suggestion for you is since you were giving the emojis it should have been great if you created a presentation on emojis instead of asking the person to look it in the chat box because sometimes what happens when a person is uh looking from the mobile it becomes very difficult to look into the chat box that is one suggestion and second one is we have to stop all the table topic session maximum by three fifty so that we give time for other evaluation section also let's keep that in mind and overall uh two wonderful speeches I thoroughly enjoyed it and two wonderful evaluation I should say I was able to learn a lot from these two people these four people from today and amazing table topic session uh apart from that um only the time as well as the screen sharing because we always talk in the screen so better have a proper screen presence whenever we are speaking so these are the two suggestions I have so over to you toastmaster of the day distinguished toastmaster Durga thank you
toastmaster Savita for and the team for the crisp uh report so let me give my final message the best investment that you can make is in yourself in terms of upskilling with the continuous improvement and the final message I'd like to give here is especially for women right if you are too good we will be judged as something wrong with her if it's too emotional then okay is it uh she is very emotional if it's a too um kind of angry then you will say aggressive then she is very bossy irrational right so what my message is anyway the society is going to judge you don't stop with that just be yourself because everyone else is taken being yourself is the greatest gift that you can give yourself for this woman's day so with that message let me conclude with the final word hero so hero comprises of if you remove her H E R in the hero what will what will happen what is the word you will get so yeah ladies and gentlemen it's hero which means both ladies and gentlemen together comprises so let's compliment each other let's also encourage each other to empower every each and every woman in your at your home at your workplace and wherever you go so with that note happy women's day once again uh I am handing over the stage to our vibrant president toastmaster Anand over to you toastmaster
thank you very much uh toastmaster of the day toastmaster uh DTM Durga ma'am you drove the session very well so meantime I request you please vote the poll has launched uh so it was an amazing and insightful uh 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 message you have given that was wonderful so now let us move on to the next session I request the miss uh toastmaster Madhavan please give your feedback about today's meeting Mr. Madhavan I think he has dropped out
no no I'm here thank you thank you honor for taking my feedback we have one more very quality meeting all the role player did their job very well overall I had a very satisfying I experienced today as far as the recommending part is that as far as the table topic goes the table topic master can provide an opportunity first to the guest or non role players or you can ask for volunteers then only pick up and particularly Felix who has already done the evaluation if there is no volunteer he can given that chance secondly there should be a contest tag name topic topic name so that people can easily recollect what is the topic is all about so that way it will enhance the quality further in my views thank you over to toastmaster Anand
uh thank you very much uh toastmaster Madhavan for your constructive feedback sure we will take it thank you very much now let me ask uh our guest Reshmi but could you please share uh today's meeting experience guest Reshmi but are you there
hello everyone
yes ma'am
you can hear me
yes yes
yeah hi everyone I'm Rashmi and I'm from Kasarghur uh that comes on the in the border of Kerala and Karnataka that's where I live so uh I know Bindu so it was because of her reference that I'm here I was very curious so actually curiosity brought me here you know and I was not expecting this I know to be so uh interesting you know or I was thinking was oh my god this is just going to be one more boring no place where people are just going to talk talk but no it was it was just so you know people just engaged everyone so well uh like everyone is given a chance to speak so that was amazing um I really enjoyed so thank you Bindu for sending me the invite and it was wonderful meeting all of you
uh yes guest Reshmi but thank you for sharing your experience about today's meeting thank you very much
thank you
yeah so keep on attending the meeting next Sunday also you can join we have many beautiful topics so next time you can participate in the table topic also thank you very much
yes yes I'm looking forward to it thank you
yes yes thank you very much and also once again I'm re- reiterating the members I request you please do the renewal once again our membership VP will right keep on update in the group uh I request toastmaster Abhinavya uh could you please share the uh result yes congratulations toastmaster Felix for the best evaluation congratulations table topics yes are two pieces in the same part so toastmaster Felix once again for the best table topics so best role player goes to Durga DTM played a role of a toastmaster of the day congratulations yes uh for the yeah of for grammarian for uh toastmaster Bindu playing the role of grammarian as well as the idiom master for the best auxiliary role player thank you very much so I'm here by adjourning the two hundred and fifty fifth meeting of the Danny theaters for our toastmasters club thank you I request you please stop the recording I request everyone